All right, we'll get going here. This is the school board work session for Thursday, October 2nd, 2025. It's 5:30 PM. And we were in the central building, second floor conference room. Welcome to all the students who are here tonight with us. And we'll turn it over to Dr. Hutsman.
Well, good evening, everybody. And it's doesn't feel like October 2nd, but thanks for everyone for being here tonight. As we get into our work session for this evening, first of all, and I, for those of you who might have seen my email on Monday, just a reminder today is National Custodian Appreciation Day. So thanks to our maintenance and custodial staff for all the work they do out in our buildings to keep us safe and clean and ready for all of our learning every day. So thanks to them for that. Also appreciate all the patience from our, particularly our high school parents and community members. We've had some phone issues out there all day long, working on it. It is a phone company issue, not an us issue, but working as best we can. So thanks for the patience. Several contacts today letting us know what was going on out there, but that's not something we're unaware of and work on. As of the, towards the end of the day, I think it was cleaned up, but I'll see tomorrow morning when we get going, how that's rolling there for that. But getting into our agenda today, we want to start with our staff spotlight that we do each of our work sessions over the course of the, of the school year. We have a new team member joining us this year. As you know, Officer Lukin had an opportunity to, to make a, make a change in the department there. And so now we're very fortunate to have a new school resource officer. Officer Brass joined us here just a couple of weeks ago and is diving right in. And from as far as I can tell, seems to be still enjoying what he's got going on after a couple of weeks. But I wanted just to give him the opportunity to introduce himself, share a little bit about how the first few weeks have gone and just had a chance to put a face to the name as we continue to work through our high school team. So if you want to say a few words here.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for letting me be here today. And I've been with the department for 16 years now already. And I was a police officer in Iowa for 10, so I've got 26 under the belt. I just love being out at the school. It's been fantastic. They threw me in the first week of homecoming, so trial by fire, I guess. But the high school, the Wiss and Harley, you guys have a great group of people running that place from everybody, the secretaries, janitorial staff, the principals, they're all fantastic people, a great group of people to work with. When I was detective for seven years, I met them through that and to continue working with them, it's, it's been a joy. So thank you, guys.
Not really to put you on the spot, but what made you interested in the SRO positions? And you had to apply and go through the process.
Yeah, so when Officer Lukin got promoted to sergeant, that opened it up. And I thought this would be a great opportunity for me to get out there. I've got kids that go here, one child goes here. So to get to see her come up into the high school next year will be exciting. I don't know if she thinks that, but it'll be for me.
Any other questions anybody has?
Lots of questions from the kids?
Yes.
If you're bringing in a dog or anything.
We do have a half Shih Tzu, half toy poodle. He's like six pounds. So we'll see if he'll come out there. I don't know, he gets a little nervous when there's that many kids.
Sure. Very good. Awesome. Well, again, thanks for taking the time to say hello and great for everyone to meet you and we look forward to seeing you on campus.
Thank you very much.
All right, so moving on with our agenda this evening. First thing is just a little bit update on the Southwest Metro situation and what we've got going on for decisions moving forward. We don't have any decisions to make tonight, but I want to update you a little bit on some of the things we've been talking about over the last 30 days. What has transpired with Southwest Metro is some learning around the bond process. Because we're an associate member school district, they have to do some work with their bylaws in order to allow us to, to do the lease levy bond if we were, if we were to choose to do that. So we're in the process of them still determining first, working with LRS, our, our financial advisors, working with the question just to confirm that we can do that if we choose to. Before we get to the will we, based on the decision that we would make as a board here, hoping for, hoping for board action on everyone's timeline probably at the November board meeting. We'd be looking at making some decisions on that, talking more about it the November work session, and then also having some conversations around what our decision will be at the November board meeting. I wanted to share a couple of new pieces of information with you tonight as we continue to build kind of our portfolio of information around the, the process. And the first thing is, Amy, do you want to pull up the tab that has the, has the building diagram on it? Nope. That one. Nope, not that one. The, the Southwest Metro one. Let's see. Southwest Metro. That's not that one. Potential school, no, that's not it either. Well, that one, we must, we must not, we must have missed that one, the email. It's in your inbox. So PowerPoint Morris Town, it's the next one down. You see it on your email? Nope. Tat, there, nope, not one more. There you go. That one. Okay, good, we got it. So now scroll down to, one more, right here. So kind of just showing you a little bit of what the Morris Town building would look like, what it could look like. About 78,000 square feet of building there in the existing building up there. Our Southwest Metro program right now is operating with 6,000 square feet here in our building. So it'd be a significant, obviously, increase of space. If we keep scrolling down a little bit, could show a little bit how they're going to potentially use that building. Currently, it's divided up in the C L means classrooms. So most room classroom space, it's got a gym, it's got a full kitchen cafeteria, that whole option there. If you go down one more time, now you can kind of see a little bit of what South Metro would do with it. So the far left green spaces would be the transition space. So they're operating really with one classroom right now upstairs here in our building on the third floor. They'd have access to far more classrooms with that space, they could expand the program and serve a lot more students with that, in that regard. And then the green and the purple that are on the upper kind of right of that picture there would be classroom space for our passages, stepping stones. That's basically kindergarten, not very many kindergartners hopefully, but K through 12 programming for our Southwest Metro setting for students. For some of those would be autism rooms because ASD does serve a lot of our setting for students, but also EBD and some of the students who need some of that more emotional behavioral support. The building could be fully secured, so students could not elope and, and travel the community, which we cannot lock here because they're attached to a K-12 facility. So there has, there's some different fire coding that they would have to do to the building to make that illegal, but they're allowed to do that based on the, the transition. If you go down one more slide, Amy, I think is the one I want to highlight too. Yeah, so if you look at the, on the right hand corner here, I'm trying to stay by my microphone, so I don't want to use my kind of pointer here, but the purple shaded spots where it looks like there's a lot of little hashtag tags in there, yep, right there. All those little rectangular rooms on the right hand side are calming rooms. So students would have opportunities for calming spaces in that facility. And you'll notice a calming room in every one of the classrooms with the opportunity for students who just need some extra space to deescalate when they get worked up. Happened to see Dr. Horton or Superintendent at a meeting I was at earlier this week and, you know, some of the needs those students have can get pretty significant. So to have some spaces to help support them in the building is, is really important for that opportunity. Let's go down one more slide, Amy, I think. Yeah, so there's an example of what some of that calming room space could look like. They've also got some sensor rooms that have to do some remodel, remodeling in the bathrooms to make sure things have the opportunity, some motor space, but really would better serve our students who have those needs and could expand that programming significantly. So in the event we decide to make this move and go this direction, I am very comfortable at this time that the space we would create would be a positive environment for those kids and they'd have a good school to go to and feel like they're in a school and they have their own space. And it would also be a, well, just a positive change for them with their identity of feeling like they're, they have the opportunity. I think that's the last one. Scroll, if you scroll down one more, Amy, we can just be sure. Yeah, that's just more of the, how the rooms would be laid out with six through eighth, eighth grade rooms, K-2 rooms, three, five rooms, those sorts of things. And then all the calming rooms in, inside there with that. So that's the high level planning of what it could look like. I think if you go down, if we scroll down, we start getting to, yeah, just it's kind of more little detail of the scene. But we'll put a detailed, a detailed plan of this together to show you and you'll get a copy of it here in November for our November work session. Jeff has, is Dr. Horton with their superintendent is working through with his board because Southwest Metro is an interesting membership discussion. So I think it's 11 members, 11 districts are actual formal members of their district and each of them has a board member from their district board on the Southwest Metro board. So they have this big, big group board, if you will, and they have to vote to approve this first because Southwest Metro will be the one purchasing the building. And so he's working with his board on step one of that, which then we're working on, would that be an appropriate turnaround for us should we make that decision going forward? I think what's attractive about this in, in full transparency for Southwest Metro is there's the opportunity to take the 15 or 16 kids they serve now, expand that to probably 45, 50, 60 kids, and bring the students back that we're busing to the Jordan and Chaska site now, which is only a few for us, but a few for Janesville, a few for New Richland, that sort of thing, and have them be in one site. We potentially could bring students from surrounding districts. That's his deal, not mine, because I'm not going to be the one trying to take those students away because they're probably being served somehow right now. But in the long term, that would, the more they expand that, I will tell you that right now, Wasika students are being served. We don't have a significant waiting list of students who would need to go into that next level program. They're serving, it, the volume is working, right? Which means that it'll be the same number of students going up here for us on average year by year, which means if they were able to build that program out with multiple students from other places, that only brings our cost down of the overall, overall facility for that opportunity. So that was one thing I wanted to show you. Now the other one that says Southwest Metro cost comparison, Amy, thank you for being patient with my finger pointing as if you can read my mind. So I just wanted to show you, this is a little bit of just, it's not, it's thought out enough to say that this is pretty much what it could look like estimated wise. It's not detailed with like specific staff members or anything like that. But so currently, Sarah and I went and looked. Independent of transportation, because that would be a separate conversation. Independent of facility costs. Southwest Metro tuition billing, which means that's what it costs them to serve those students above and beyond the aid we get, which then they get, which then we bill back to us, is between $350,000 and $450,000 a year. I think it was 350 and 23, 24 and 450 and 24, 25. So if you think about, we were to run that program our own with three licensed teachers at a probably conservative estimate of $90,000 package insurance and everything for all three of them, and administrator, which I currently have, we would have to try to piece together OT, occupational therapy, you know, physical therapy, nursing services. None of them would be 1.0 employees. So I figure about three FTEs between those services. And some of them are not licensed teachers, so they get, they have a little different pay rate because they're independent contracts. A clerical service, that comes out to be about $760,000 plus or minus because I didn't include extra HR costs or admin costs that now we're, because right now we don't cover, those are not our employees that work in Southwest Metro. So their employee overhead cost is not borne by us right now. If we were to make the Morris Town move, you take that 450 on the high end of tuition billing, and even if that's 500 or 550,000 as costs go up, although it might go down if they expand their programming. So that's why I thought 450 might be reasonable. The addition, that comes out of the general fund, which is where that 760 would come out if we run this program. If we were then to lease levy for the building cost, which the first year would be about 300,000, then it goes down to 284, and then it would reduce from there as that goes down, that would be lease levy cost. So our general fund would basically remain relatively similar to what it does right now, but we'd add that lease levy component. If we were to try to run the program ourselves, we'd be adding a couple hundred thousand dollars to our general fund cost to do that. So at the end of the day, the bottom line probably is pretty similar with that opportunity, with the exception of the fact that the students would be in probably a better served, a better building to serve them. They would still remain Southwest Metro employees, wouldn't be something we'd have to try to take on ourselves. We'd have space here then we could fill with other things, things potentially. And we looked at this last time and I didn't want to bring it up again because you've already seen it and we'll bring it again in November. That lease levy dollar value is significant, but it's to the, to the average homeowner in our community. It's not super unmanageable, 30 to 35 dollars a year on a $250,000 house. So three bucks a month or so on that is, is not to be dismissed, but it's not so overwhelming that it's an automatic no brainer or no way. So that's the new information I wanted to share with you tonight, so you can kind of noodle on that and think about that over the next few weeks, see what questions you have. I've been a little bit of a holding pattern the last few days as Sarah and I were talking with LRS and Southwest Metro about the bonding process as an associate member. So we're an associate member, I probably cut my explanation off too soon. Those 11 members are full members, they have board vote, okay? We're an associate member, so we don't have a member on their board. That's the only real difference. The other significant difference is we don't pay for all the rest of their buildings. We just, we just cover our space as a group of four down here. If we were to, so let's, I thought, well, maybe we should just become a member. Well, then all the rest of their leases come into our potential, you know, purview. And then we could be potentially, it might save us on this building, but it would cost us more down the road for covering out other sites that they have as an individual member. So we've been asked over the years, do you want to go from associate to full member? And this still seems like the best bet for us. That's what I know as of today. Like I said, no decision to be made at this time, but I didn't feel like 60 days since we talked about it last and then all of a sudden in November, me coming to you and asking you to make a decision on it would be fair. So I wanted to give you more information now, continue to, to think about it and talk it through and we can come back here in a few weeks.
What? So there's no police department in Morristown?
No.
It's just covered by Rice County. What's the safety plan there?
One of the biggest safety plans would be that the building's locked until they can't, they can't just go.
Internal.
Yeah, those are all those calming rooms.
Yeah?
Yep.
So they're not going to have a liaison involved or?
It probably would be however, when schools is covered. So I don't, I don't know the answer to that question. Yeah. I would say that our, and Brent is not here anymore, but our liaison is probably there once a week, I would say on average, although in some years, we've basically said the SRO is not going over, you have to call dispatch.
Right, which, which brings that up because I know that it's called.
Yeah, yeah. So I don't have the answer to that.
You know, because that's, that's also our student we're putting into that position to around other students. So that's why I ask.
Yeah. So I don't know, I could ask the question of how they staff it when they get there. Yeah. Yeah. Good question.
That was kind of my question too, like would there be any downfalls or negatives to, you know, having a large group of kids, right? So you said there's a potential for them to expand and maybe bring some other kids back. Any downfalls to our kids being in this kind of bigger environment now?
Well, well, no, because it's their, their individual environment doesn't change any. It just adds more classrooms of kids. They don't do a lot of interacting. So those eight, six to eight kids who are in their group, that's their group throughout the day. They wouldn't be in a group of 20 in any given time. You know, they, those rooms are, those, those buildings are pretty restrictive in those programs and so they don't.
Do that with like, they have the gymnasium and they have lunch? Do they eat in the classroom then or?
Often times, yeah. I know our students here, they come down and they get it and they bring it back to their room to eat.
Okay.
Or they get it delivered depending on how the day is going with that. So, yeah.
It would be a little bit different with the, because now it's a K-12 building, right? So that'd be a little bit different than what, what they're now.
Correct. Yep.
Which I suppose could mean a student that starts young may get used to that and be able to stay the same as opposed to having to change partway through one.
Yeah, and the, the goal, and I, I wish I could say this was more successful, but the goal is that the student doesn't stay in setting four for the remainder of their school career. They, they have some success, they find out what works for them, they get back to their regular school. I wish that happened more often than it did. I think it does more often when they get in there younger and they don't tend to stay there the rest of their school career. By the time you get into 10th, 11th grade, if you get to that, that level, it's hard to get, to get back. But yeah, those are all things to think about. Yep. All right, anything else? Okay, very good. Now, on a, on a different topic, going onto the item three here and we'll, we'll go through this, these to pass around. Relatively quick highlight, because I think, and if it's interesting to you and you have an hour to spend driving somewhere to listen or something, that's what I did, which pulled off is, so you can find the webinar on MSBA website. And obviously I wouldn't recommend looking at the graphs and graphs while you're driving, but, but I had the chance to listen to it while I was driving and.
Thank you.
Morris Leatherman, and some of you remember Peter Leatherman, he came and gave the presentation when he did our survey a couple of years ago on our facility things. They do a Minnesota survey on schools every fall. And it's, I know you, you probably have seen like the, they do the, the opinion polls at the state fair kind of thing. Well, this is like they do their, they're basically polling and he said they got a very good percentage of respondents and it's a, they set a two to three percent, you know, error rate with that opportunity. And so I just want to give you some highlights of what they found. They, they basically called Minnesotans and they asked them questions of how they felt about schools. And this is, I don't have a, so we should do this out of this conversation. It's more of a just a, hey, I think this is interesting for us all to know as, as board members and school leaders. Not surprisingly, the majority of Minnesotans property, property tax sensitivity is high. You know, people think that their, their taxes are high. Interestingly enough, right now we're finding that cities and counties are driving most of the increases, a perceived increase, but the challenge becomes that school ballots become the place voters can say no. Because they also found that the average voter would rather support their school than they would maybe a city or county. But by the time this, by the time the school comes asking for a referendum, the, the coffer is empty because the city and county have done what they needed to do. And, and so that doesn't mean that we don't ask for what we need, it just means that's something to be aware of, not, not a shocker for us. Not surprising, the, the tolerance for, for votes or for approval around the state, $17, $18 a month for bonds, but content matters. Safety, CTE space is polling better than like, I always want to do another turf field or something like that. People aren't supportive of those things when the cost gets to be certain high. That's really interesting. This was just an interesting tidbit that I thought was, I mean, it's nowhere in any kind of legislation, so I don't know why they asked it, but I just thought it was interesting. You know, state funds about 64% of, of, of schools. What do they say? Oh, 1, 60% people would support a 1% income tax increase to cut school tax, property tax by 50%. So that was just an interesting dynamic of how you look at what that means for your particular home. There's, it's nowhere in legislation, so it's not going to be out there, but, but that was interesting. Then we had what I call public trust and the kind of atmosphere type things they asked about in the city. You know, districts budget effectively and efficiently, you know, low 60s across the state saying, yes, our district's budget efficiently. We involve the community. Again, these aren't Wasika information, Wasika information, this is just information around the state. People trust the district to do what's right, you know, about 73%. Think about that. So that's, that's pretty interesting. This is, this will be interesting next, and actually next week when our survey goes out about communication, I'm going to see this engagement gap. 51% of non-parents, they don't follow the district. They don't really pay attention to what the district's going on, but they assume the information's there if they want it. And then parents drive most of the following, like our social media, as our website draws, that's not shocking with that. When it comes to academics and testing, this is really interesting for us to keep in mind. And I talked with principals about this. You know, most people say that its quality is about the same. Metro are more likely to say qualities decline than the outstate. And we've got some of that adequacy perceptions. 36% say their school is adequately funded, down a little bit from last year. But this MCA awareness, this is really interesting to me. You know, people who say they're aware of the, of the MCA tests, 50% believe, 57% believe the tests accurately reflect achievement. And most people do say the testing volume is about right. So as school districts, when we talk about, we test kids a lot, we, we overtest or we, you know, the MCAs don't always accurately reflect all the learning. Well, there may be, that may be true and there is some value, there's some reality to that. The bottom line is the public in our state does feel that those reflect achievement and how we're doing. So as we as a district craft our communication around our accountability and results, it's important to recognize that our community does value those, those metrics, or the state, I should say, in general, values those metrics, which is important. And then technology skepticism is, is still strong, right? With, with that. Screen time is an issue. And right now, people, we don't have one of these, nor do we plan to have one, but tech levies are not an easy sell right now because people are worried about screen time and technology are really overwhelming instruction with that. Last couple of things that I just thought were interesting, despite the fact that, you know, as employers, some of these things become challenging for us. There is broad support for free breakfast and lunch still, based on the people polled. Summer, summer employment for non-licensed staff still is getting support and having limits on, on K-3 suspension, so it's interesting. And then the last thing on here, I would just point out endorsement yo-yos. That doesn't happen necessarily in, in, in our district, but what, what that's referring to is teacher union endorsements of like a school board candidate at this point. Right now, they're saying that people value a teacher union saying this is going to be a good school board member or not. And last year it was, they said the parents group would tell you if that was a good school board member or not. So the point being, a visible endorsement could help in one community and hurt in another. And so I'm thankful in Wasika, we don't have to deal with that, that political part of, of the school board election process. So these are just some nuggets. Dave, is there anything you pulled out of that? I know you watched it. Anything else that you pulled out that was interesting to share?
What, one part that I found interesting was that most people, when you compare the city, the county and the school, most people will say they'd like to see the biggest share of their taxes go to the school. And yet the school gets, I'm just going to say penalized because they're kind of following the city and following the county. And it's the one thing that people can say no to. My, well, I have some pretty strong feelings about this and, and they go way back to when I was on school board before. I don't feel, and this is nothing against the city, it's nothing against the county, I just think there should be a level playing field. If we have to go to the voters for approval, the city should do the same, the county should do the same. If they say no, no, it's okay for the county to do that and it's okay for the city to do that, then I go, that's fine, then we should be able to do it too. But that's not how it's worked for, is, I don't know how far back this goes, probably a long ways.
Yeah, a long ways. Yeah.
And I've asked a fair amount of people who I thought might be, might be able to give me an answer to that over the years and I've never gotten any kind of answer as to why that story it is. And like I said, it's nothing against city, nothing against the county, I just, I, I want to see a level playing field and it's not level. It's not a level. So there's my.
Yeah. So that, first I'll say, if anybody wants to watch the whole, because Peter does a nice job. He also talks a little bit about the legislature and the governor and some of the things that they, people that polled about that, that really isn't relevant for us as a. That really isn't relevant for us as a school district. I just pulled out some of the school district stuff here now. But you can find on the MSBA website, if you ever want to listen to it while you're on the road or something. That, that's great, or I can send you the link if you need it, just let me know. But it leads us into our next conversation, which really is about, as we continue to have discussions around our facilities, I bring up the people's opinions towards bonds and elections because as we, to think about what our plan's going to be over the next few years, we want to make sure that we feel really good about our plan. So when we communicate to the community, here's what we think we're going to propose. We feel good about the fact that people's opinions will be what they are, but we feel good about our plan. So that's where we are in the committee and with facilities committees working through some of that right now. Last Thursday, Amy, do you want to bring up the ICS one? Last Thursday, the facility committee, Scott and Theron were there, were able to, enjoy the game, see you later. Were able to hear from ICS about some of the facility condition assessment they had. It's a long process. I, I hope that, I don't know if you got all your homework done yet or not. Not, but I mean, it's, it, there's one of these books for every one of our buildings. And so they did a really nice job of being thorough. And some of the information they gave us, Amy, just want to scroll through a little bit. I just want to highlight a couple of things to go down, probably just four or five, so they don't really need to know those pictures and stuff. But keep going, keep going, more, yep, keep going. So if you, if you stop, keep going, next one, I think. Yep. So basically what they did was they, they looked at some of our building needs and they assessed the priority levels. Priority one, two, three and four, depending on how urgent the need was, one being the most urgent. Just scroll to the next one then, Amy. Talked about some of the LTFM expenditures, what we can spend money on, keep going. And then they went basically through every building, talking about the ages, the square footage, rolling. Energy usage, we have that, keep going down one more. And then they gave every building a report card based on yellow being the systems that are poor, blue being the systems that are fair, green being good. We didn't have any systems in any of our buildings that were critical. So that was really good news to hear that. And basically every building gets a report card like that. And if you go down, I think to the next, I just want to show one more. And then it talks about right here, which of the systems and how much money it would need to, or what, what the cost would be to repair those systems over the next ten years. So then each system has, you know, the mechanical system, building envelopes, electrical, site projects, what the next ten years would cost. This happens to be Hartley we're looking at right now with that. And it kind of does on the bottom with the green bars, talks about what a potential ten-year cost plan would be. Not necessarily sensitive to whether or not we can afford that in those years, but that would be how the years potentially could go based on the priorities of those items. And we have one of those for every single building. If you go down to one more. Yep. Now this talks about our current LTFM plan. And you can, and the red would be expenses and the blue would be revenues. And you know, you can see we're below the zero line going forward. So our current LTFM could not support that ten-year plan at Hartley. Is what they're showing us with this particular document. What we will notice as you go through them is that the high school and WIS are above the line. You know, our LTFM plan can cover the needs at those two buildings. It's not the same at Central and at Hartley. They don't have the, we don't have the budget in the next ten years LTFM costs to be able to fund, fund those. Also pulled out on this, and this is a long, a longer explanation from the other day, nope, stay where you are, sorry. Is that six point eight million. So there is the opportunity to do indoor air quality and roofing and HVAC product, projects on what's, those category two or six funding, which essentially is what they would, the board could authorize that without a vote. And so you do have like all the mechanical systems and roofing at Hartley. You could do all that with board authority, without author, without needing community approval. But then it would just be replacing like for like, it wouldn't be an upgrade of any kind. And you'd have to balance that with, is that the right thing to do for our community? Is that the right, meet our long-term needs, that sort of thing. So, long story short, if you go to the one, if you go down one more, Amy. We have one of those for every single building. I'm not going to go through them all right now. But what I do have is I have Scott and Theron each have a book. And then Charlie will have a book and then I will email or we can print them out, each of you. So we'll also have a book, so you can spend some time in the next few weeks going through this. We talked about the fact that we probably, we, it's going to take some time. And so we're not going to probably have anything to do from an area of recommendations in October. Where at our next facility committee meeting, we'll just kind of talk about where we're at in terms of how we've, how far we've gotten with the books and working through. Takeaways, thoughts from the two of you in the process?
You know, I think like if you go back to, to this, like clarify the question I had on it. You know, when you look at Hartley, like it goes six point eight million on mechanical.
Oh, yeah, yeah, go back, yep.
That, that raised the flag for me because I know when I, when I visualize the price on mechanical, you could do two, at least two Hartleys for that price. But what they considered in that was all the things that tag along the electrical for the mechanical, anything else ceiling work wise or any of that aspect. So it's not just the mechanical, there's a lot of other trade packages in with that number. So if you were to look at doing a project, there, maybe some of that number will dissolve into the other packages. But.
Yeah, I think in the back of the books, they call that out a little.
But that, that's one thing to keep in mind when you open up those numbers. They looked at it as an individual scope and what would all go in with it.
Yep.
So. I mean, I don't think anything really surprised us, but there's not, like you said, nothing's urgent. We know what we have, just got to keep taking care of what we have. But.
Scott, anything else you took away from that?
Just. The, the, I don't know how to say it, I guess. The, we start looking at it and some of the systems and when they, when they're going to be coming due and what their costs are and that we can't, we're not going to be able to push this forever. And that, and at least we're seeing what that, what that outlook looks like, timing wise, so.
Yeah. We have not debriefed as a committee since that conversation. So it just, just the way the dates felt with the meetings, we had it last Thursday, we have this meeting tonight. So just kind of wanted everybody to know where we're at with it on the process. I would say that this was, the reports were exactly what I was hoping for. ICS delivered on what I expected for them with some costs, with some prioritization, with some overall recommendations. But really, from the lens of here's the condition of how your buildings are, now, that cost there, that, that fourteen million over ten years at Hartley is just basically to fix what we have. So, which is that's what we wanted them to do. We didn't want them to start idealizing projects. It was okay, what are the things cost? So I was really pleased with what they did for us, particularly for the price.
What was the sixty percent rule of thumb that he was talking about?
Yeah, good question. So he was talking about when, when that number, so fourteen million or so, starts getting up to over sixty percent of whatever it costs to build a new building. So it's, they call it the facility condition index, right? So once that gets up over sixty percent of the cost to replace the building, then MDE, Department of Education and industry standard would start suggesting you consider replacing the building as opposed to just continuing to put that money back into it. So one of the things he reckon, he recognized, and I don't think it's, I don't want to give you verticals going through this slide, but I remember going off the top of my head. I believe that both Hartley and Central were both at like forty-four and forty-six percent respectively. But that's just to replace what you have. So he started talking about, these are adding sprinklers, they're adding ADA accessibility. Had no ADA in there.
Which, when you do so much, you got to do a percentage of your project test address ADA.
Right. So, so essentially the ICS reps were pretty confident that both these buildings would approach or surpass that point six. You start adding in there, things you do to actually renovate the building. Because this was just replace like for like, right? That's what I understand, yeah. So it was, they were already pretty close to that. So I put him on the spot a little bit and said, what do you think? And he just confirmed all the conversations we've been talking about so far, about our options, about sites and, and remodel versus reduction versus different things. And so it was not shocking, but reassuring that essentially it's been, when, when they look at it as a professional, objective lens, are seeing some of the same things we are for options. So I, I see next steps now that, you know, the committee, when we meet next time, we'll kind of debrief where we're at and see what our progress has been in respect, we'll have been through all the information by then in detail. And then we'll just keep working through it in the next few weeks.
Was it, did, was it announced to all of us that there was a grant?
Yeah, I, I don't, I didn't, did I say it, we say it at the last board meeting? Well, it must've been because it was in the paper, so he must've watched it. Yeah. So, yeah, we did get, we, I don't know if it's a hundred percent security yet, but they're working towards a grant to pay for that. Yep. There was a little bit of, I know it was still in the works a little bit when I talked, but yeah. So that would help offset that cost too.
What is the grant cover?
Uh, the potentially the, the cost of the assessment ourselves. Yeah, the assessment itself, so, yeah, which would be good. Yeah. So that's the update on that. Any questions or thoughts? Okay, sticking with the facility topic, this is like, there's going to be, depending on how much you want to think about two feet of grass. This idea. So if you want to pull that other one up. So, okay, so here's one I'm going to have to probably stand up and, and point to it in just a minute. So next to the, here's the, here's the, the origin of this. So we know we have the marketplace subdivision apartments going up there in that lot between Walmart and the high school. As they're getting ready to sell the land to the developer, the city is, obviously they did all their site work and all their measurements and getting all the land plots. While what they found is that there was a small piece of land, a strip, I'm going to get up here and show you. So the mic not, not pick me up, but this, so this is your, the road, high school's here. Right? Apartments are, apartments are going to go here. And you can kind of see where this type, if you've driven by there, I did, I did just today. There is sidewalk here and then it kind of cuts up and there's a small kind of boulevard of grass right there. That grass is actually still our land, about that much of it going up and down that road. And then around the corner here, there's, I looked at it today. The pond is like right here and this little patch of grass right here is actually still our land. Either from a plotting error or just from the way it worked out, right? So that needs to be cleaned up in order for them to go through with the sale of the, of the land. And so what the city is requesting of us is since, we're not going to do anything with that grass, they're requesting we do a quick claim deed with them, which basically says, yeah, we'll vacate that property. You can have it, you can sell it and you can proceed with their, otherwise that holds up their whole, their sale because they can't sell land they don't own with that opportunity there for that. And it doesn't make any, I don't think that, it doesn't add up to enough square footage to, to change the cost, any of anything with everything. There's nothing we're really going to do about it, do with that land. I don't see it being an issue. I would recommend we just move forward, similar to when we talked about Tink Larson, the left field foul pole was on our land. And we said, why don't we give them the land so it's all on city property and we're not trying to mow into their grass anymore. So I don't have an issue with it, but it does take board approval for us to obviously quit claim any, any land. So there's really two parts to this process. The first is, we need to, I'd love to hear your thoughts to see if there's any objections or concerns or questions. And the second thing is, we don't have another board meeting scheduled until October twenty-third. And that's concerning for them is holding up their, they want to start doing some work this fall. So we, if this is something that the board would like to, to go along with, which, you know, again, I think is probably the, the reasonable thing to do, we should call a special meeting for next week and come together. At least if, if it's pretty straightforward for the board, we really just need a quorum to come together. If it's something they want to talk about more, we should try to do it when everybody can come. And that would be the only action item, open up the board meeting, take action on this and move on. We have a DAC committee scheduled on Tuesday. And so we could do a meeting at five o'clock on Tuesday and that would take just a few minutes after our DAC meeting. Or, yeah, five o'clock typically when those are done. Or on Thursday, we have a finance committee meeting, which should finish up about five, five fifteen. And we could do a short meeting that day as well. And again, it's probably a very, very brief meeting unless more discussion is to be had. So before I make any assumptions though, any concerns, questions, thoughts from the board on this, on this? I didn't want to send it via email because it's kind of hard to explain.
It's just, it's just a keying up process like you did with Tink Larson. I think it just makes sense.
Well, there's no, I mean, no background into why it was ours on the first place or?
It probably, no other than the fact that I'm, I think nineteenth avenue there, when that, at one point that was our land, right? And then it became a city street where they vacated.
Before they did the sidewalks.
Who planted all them pine trees? Because those were there way before, when that was farm ground.
Yeah.
So who, who did that?
I don't know.
The road.
Is that all at one point part of that?
The parking lot of the high school back there, that west parking lot, you know, by the, and then all in front of WIS. As I understand it, that used to all be a city street. And now they said, and then they, they, they quit claimed that to us as school district property. And my guess is they missed that part of it when they did their drawings. I don't know more than that. No.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I think it had to do with that sidewalk too, because I think the road moved a little bit at one point. And I think that might be where some of that came from.
Yeah. Because when, and when Carl called me about it, he said, unless you have plans that show something different and I don't. So that was what they were, I don't. So, yeah.
Well, now I know why I've been trimming the grass on that curb all these years. It's really school district property.
There you go.
So I can sleep better tonight.
And either day works.
And, and originally when, I just, I just first talked to Amy about this, what, yesterday? They had contacted me last Friday and by the time the paperwork, roughly Friday. And our, Patton, Horst, and Berg, our attorneys working through it with them. So Perry and I, Perry Berg and I connected this week early. By the time I got the resolution and the idea satisfactory to my need, it was noon on Thursday, Tuesday, which I didn't feel was appropriate for our notification, our notices to add a meeting tonight. That's why I didn't do it at the end of tonight's meeting because I thought we've got to give proper notification of a special meeting. So if we make a decision tonight to meet next Tuesday or Thursday, we can post that tomorrow and then meet our, meet our policy for telling people we're going to have a meeting. So, so a little bit of going through, going through the process to make sure we follow the process. But we got to make sure we follow the process. So, that's how it works. So.
Does anybody have any objections about moving forward with this, or concerns? Would Tuesday at five o'clock, would that work for?
Tuesday works for me.
I mean, it probably will be like a five-minute meeting.
Yeah. We'll call the order, we'll do the.
If that.
Move on. Yeah. We have DAC right before that. So if you're planning to be, anybody who's planning to be at that.
Can we go for five o'clock on Tuesday and?
Yeah.
The seventh?
Hopefully, at least four of us, if not all, all seven of us are there, but.
Right.
At least four of us, when we can take care of business, I guess.
Very good. Okay. We'll do the notification, we'll get it on the calendar, we'll be ready to go. That sounds good. Yep. All right. And then any other questions on that? That's an interesting tidbit you didn't expect to get to. Be new with that. All right. So we're going to end on some good news tonight for many reasons. But we have been talking with Ellers, Sarah and I, about our two thousand fifteen high school bond. And about potentially, we're, we're coming due to do, we're coming up to the point where refunding some of that bond, refinancing, if you will, is coming a little bit more reasonable. The coupons that are attached to that bond, is it matured over the next few years, are high enough that with the interest rates doing what they are right now, we potentially could do some refunding of that bond in the next few months to be able to save some significant dollars. And so here's some of the notes that I have just for right now. Each year, starting with two, any given year, there's a call. Each year, starting with two, any given year, there's a call rate. And I'm gonna explain this in the air as best I can. The finance committee is actually gonna get visited by Ellers next week and get the real presentation from them with the actual numbers. But long story short, as the, as the call rate for the bonds go each given year, they're, they call it a coupon, but it's an interest rate that you're paying at that particular piece. And it's 4% for the next several years, I think if I saw it correctly. And it goes down to 3.5 or 3.125. Essentially between now and 2034, that those coupon rates are high enough that it would make sense for us to refund some of these bonds and save some dollars on our overall tax impact. What that means basically is we would probably be looking at what's called a partial refund. We would, we would look at refunding all of our bonds through 2034, which is, if you think about the total bond going through 2036, that's almost up through the end. But the last few years are low enough coupon rates that we want to do that. But the, the good news is, as of right now, I looked at this market, market rate the other day, it would save us about $300,000 over the course of the, over the course of the bond. And so that's a, that's a positive thing for our community. What we would do, if, if this is something the board wants us to move forward with, which I don't see why it wouldn't, is at the October meeting, yeah, the October meeting, I would bring an intent resolution to you and basically say that you would authorize Sarah and I to execute all our partial refunding of this board, of, of this bond, if the savings exceeds this particular threshold. So it wouldn't be the situation where you'd say, yeah, just go do it. But if you're gonna save us at least $250,000, then execute. We'd have the option to execute that opportunity because we don't want to say, yeah, just go do it the first time, you can save money. And then six months later, we have buyer's remorse, we wish we waited a little bit. The question that I need to ask when we meet with Ellers next time is how often? You know, can you do this any more than once? And I don't know the, the answer to that off the top of my head with that. So, and the other good news when it comes to refunding bond, bond, bonds like this, is this money does not come back to the school district. This money goes directly back to the taxpayers through their debt services levy. They're gonna see that tax, those taxes go down. $300,000 over the course of the next six, seven years. It was like 45,000-ish or so a year. That's gonna be some, I mean, I wouldn't say it's, it's overwhelming, but it is significant impact to our levy to, to support. And why would you not save your taxpayers dollars when you can? So that's what happens is you would, you would pass that intent resolution. Then the Ellers would look at when they're going to actually issue the bonds and, and do the kind of the pre-sale report, that, that we would then come maybe in November and, and give a report on that for our pre-sale of our bonds. And then you would then authorize the bonds potentially in December. So that is a little earlier than I thought we were gonna be able to do it. So that's pretty, that's positive right now. So that's what we're looking at. So good news to potentially save our community some dollars. Next week, it happened to work out for our Ellers partners to visit us. I think it'll be virtually, but they're gonna be able to sign into the finance committee meeting and go through it in more detail, which then we can then bring back to the full board here at the October meeting.
Is this like an optimal time to do something like this?
Well, I would say that what, what their assessment was, and I would agree, is that we've got pretty good rates to begin with. And so we have to try to find a time when we think the rates are gonna be low enough that would actually save us some significant dollars. And that's where we are right now. So I think the answer is yes to that. The further we get into the maturity of the bond, so it's a 2015, it's a 20-year bond. So we're about halfway through. The closer you get to the end, the lower the call rate coupons are. And then you save less dollars because it'd be harder for the interest rates to get lower. I think our last few years, it's like 3, 3.125, 3.125, which is gonna be harder to get under when you get to that point. So this is, but halfway through is pretty optimal with that. And I've seen it happen a couple of different times and it, it's always good news when you can lower your debt for your, for your community. So that's the update to finish our note, our meeting on a positive note. And next week, more details from, for the finance committee and move on from there. Any other questions about that? Okay. Good deal. That's all. A lot of stuff in a short period of time, so thanks everybody to.
You said maybe an hour and.
Yeah, there we go.
All right. Thanks, everybody.